The time being 6:30, I'll file this meeting of the planning board to order. Tonight, we have a couple of public hearings to deal with. One of which is the zoning amendments that will be for the town meeting. We're going to be discussing a special permit for the water resource district on Manly Street and a subdivision application for Copeland Street. We'll start out with the zoning amendments for, they will be coming before the town meeting. There was a, a public hearing was announced in the Brockton enterprise on September the 30th and October the 7th. It's listed, it is, we're going to be dealing with the MBTA multifamily housing overlay district. And the second article is going to be the accessory dwelling units, ADUs. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but it was in the, in the paper and I make mention, reference to it. The, the first one is MBTA article for our MBTA family housing overlay district. We've already had a couple of public hearings on it. We discussed it, it's been around for pretty much all of this, this year. We came up with a parcel of, of land located on, on North Main Street. It's located in North Main Street, it's currently where Ramco has their, their facility. It is going to allow for, to have 150 units. The state is requiring us to come up with at least, at least 145 units. It is in, in compliance with the, with the regulations that they have brought forth. And the, we, we've had this before us a couple of times and we finally have come down to the end. We, we have to act on this at town meeting before the end of the year. And if we don't come up with something, the state is threatening and they're already doing it to other towns to withhold funding for various things. It's considerable amount of money that they're, that we, that's currently on the table, never mind more to come. So, we really don't have any, any, any choice in, in this. But by law, the, the planning board has to make a recommendation to town meeting. And that's what we'll, yeah.
And Mr. Shaven, I know you're aware of this, this is more for the benefit of anybody who watches the meeting.
Okay.
I just want to clarify that it is not a mandate to construct 145 units.
Yes.
It's a mandate to zone in such a way that if you were to do a mathematical exercise and divvy up the parcels, you could get a certain amount of units. But whether that's exactly what would be built, that's not what it's, that's not what it's requiring, it's just that these are all right.
Yes, thank you. Which is one of the good things in, in the area that we picked. It may be built in the future, it may not be, but it doesn't, like she said, it doesn't have to. It's a typical state, they say you gotta do something, but yet you don't have to do it, it's a...
Okay, got a question.
Okay.
We vote this in, we kind of good, good old boys, they get the lot, do the designated area, but all of a sudden, somebody comes in and goes to build 150 units someplace else in town. Does that negate that law?
Um, it would be completely separate, so that...
We've now reached the 145 number, so...
Yeah, it's unrelated. So, this overlay district would remain in place just as all of our other zoning districts are in place? So that, separate from the affordable housing, which I think is what you were mentioning?
Yeah, if somebody, if, if somebody came in, like, city of Brockton is took over by the Campello, I came by there the other day, I haven't been up there in a long time, by the Campello train station, they built this monstrous building, it's gotta be 400 units in there if this, and if somebody, yeah...
Every time I look at it, it's another story on top of it.
And Bridgewater has got out near 495, has got a place that's got 600 units in there. But if some builder just decides to come in and he's, he's the nice guy, he wants to be good to the state and build 150 low-income units, this doesn't negate this?
So...
I mean, we're meeting, we are meeting what they say, we've gotta have a place for 145 units.
Yep. So, I'll, I'll be dramatic for purposes of illustration, there's, I think, seven parcels in play in this overlay district.
Yeah.
Somebody could come in and build a single-family house, multi-tenant, it's a business district. They could do anything that's allowed in the business district. All that this would do, so if it gets voted in at town meeting, all it does is create the district. So, has nothing to do with maybe 15 units gets built there. We're still in compliance with the zoning requirement to create the overlay district.
So, the number, the state's number of units that they want really is irrelevant?
Exactly. Yep. It, it was part of what fueled the calculation in terms of if we could meet the technical requirements of the law, but it doesn't say you have to build 150 units, it just says you have to zone for an area that could have that amount of density through this mathematical equation that may or might, may not ever come to fruition. Once you put all of the, so basically, they take the zoning district acreage, they take all of the setbacks and things in the business district because that's what's going to apply, and they come up with this calculation. For purposes of the law, the town had to zone for no less than 145 units, but zoning for it alone, not building it.
Every day, I learn new, new definitions of words, stupid.
With, with the 40B, they can, they can go, you know, put up affordable housing, but this isn't, this is...
Yeah, but their 40B is only 10%.
Yeah. But, and also, we have the ADU, accessory dwelling unit. While you were so good with that last one, Tracy, would you like to explain that one away for you two?
Sure. So, generally speaking, it's, it's a requirement that the town allow for, it's called a protected use ADU, which is going to enjoy the same type of protections under the law as educational, religious, those types of developments. And it will allow them as of right in the general residential and farming district. What we, we currently have an ADU bylaw, but it has requirements in it, and I have just a couple of examples. So, we have an owner occupancy requirement, that if an ADU is built, the primary structure has to, you know, there has to be an owner occupancy requirement that the owner is living there. Another thing that we have in our current bylaw is that a special permit is required, but it is allowed in all districts by special permit today. So, those are a couple of examples of what we have in place that aren't consistent with the new law. So, the new law says in a single-family district, so our general residential and farming district, one accessory dwelling unit will be allowed as of right. It can be attached or detached, and it is allowed to...
Only one?
So, the way the law is, you have to allow for one, so that's what we did. But, we changed, the amendment proposes a change, so that it would only allow the one. So, no longer would it be allowed anywhere else, even by special permit. So, we limit the district, so you, today, you could have, you could apply for one in any of the districts. If this, if this proposal goes through, it would only be allowed in the general residential and farming. One unit protected by right. So, site plan review would be done by the building commissioner.
So, that is a self-sustaining unit?
Separate, separate living unit, yes.
I mean, presently now, you can have an in-law apartment as long as the kitchen is, general is shared.
Yeah.
So, now, you could have a separate kitchen in both units?
Yes.
Do the setbacks still apply for that unit?
Yes.
Okay.
For the accessory buildings?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it could, could also be a conversion. You could take a, you could take a garage and you could, you could convert that into it, as long as it fits, fits those numbers, that criteria.
Can I ask a stupid question?
Yes.
Of Tracy, if that...
Of course, I think.
I don't know a lot about this, I've heard everything from everybody, but you don't know it's true. Is there a reason we're gonna get these units? Because we wanted, we're getting a train station?
The ADU, so separate, that, the train station is more related to the MBTA communities amendment. The accessory dwelling units is a completely separate law...
Okay.
...that is standalone. So, it's the law, the state is, there's a new law that says communities have to allow accessory dwelling units in single-family residential.
Okay, but as far as the train station, what if we don't want a train station?
End of story.
Still have to allow them?
I don't know what anybody wants. The, for the accessory dwelling units?
Yeah.
Unrelated to the train station.
Okay.
But we're not getting, we're not getting a train station, it's only because we're in an adjacent town.
Adjacent to a bridge.
It has a train station.
Okay.
That, that's why it comes in.
Well, it's related to the data.
But, you know, we're not getting a, we're not getting a train station.
Don't need it.
Now, does anybody, I, I think it's very important that we do recommend it, knowing, knowing what the ramifications are. They, they, they're already...
Can we just recommend?
That's all we, all we have...
We don't have to make a comment?
No, we, we, we have to, yeah, we, all we have to do is, we recommend the passage of it to the, to the town meeting. You don't have to vote for it at a town meeting. And, and I know I've already done this a couple of times, but we're gonna have to hold on those and, and, and vote for it, because otherwise, we're gonna be in a, in a position. And they're, they're talking even, even civil penalty, penalties, not just, not just taking our money away.
She can off, she can put these penalties even if we vote for it.
Well...
They've already delayed the Forest Street Bridge since she became governor. That's been, that's been changed for, backed up for four years, when it was gonna be a hot item, gonna be built, money was appropriated. Now, if you look on the DOT site, it's still listed as in design stage.
Oh, that, that hasn't moved, they haven't even had the design hearing, because we'd hear about that. So, they're not even at the 25% stage. They haven't done anything for two years.
Well, they're there all the time. The engineer must get paid for making a stop.
I think that was probably the sidewalk, when, when you...
No, no, this is, this is the same engineering firm. I drive by and you'll, I'll see them, I forget what their name, and they're not local.
No.
But I, the, the firm that did the sidewalk is, it's a local firm, you see in different locations.
Yeah.
This firm that says, like, somebody, "I just got my surveyor's license, the state's gonna hire me."
Mr. Shaven, just by way of update, I was on a call earlier today, and they were just kind of giving the numbers. And I think that initially, people have seen it on the news, towns that were upset about it and sued and those types of things. As of today, 144 of the 171 MBTA, 171 MBTA communities, I think it is, 144 have submitted a district that complies. They're in various stages in terms of the approvals. But just, I just say that as context for where there was a lot of energy in the beginning and a lot of legal activity was going on, I think a lot of it has settled. And so, I think what is coming to light is there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of ability for the town to argue against it. And so, and they've made clear that January 2026 is when they're really gonna start evaluating the communities that have not complied and start determining what it looks like to be non-compliant. So, that's just my, my update on, on kind of where the state's...
I got no problem, it's just the bullying tactic.
That's why...
That's, that's the part that bothers me the most, is if you want us to do something, ask us, but don't say, you know, you know, "I'm the governor." "I don't give a damn, I didn't vote for you now, I'll vote for you the next time."
And, and a town, and a town meeting, you don't even have to vote for, for, for this, but we, we, we've got to get it onto the town meeting floor, is all we gotta do.
I think it's gonna be hard to, I, I don't think it's gonna go at a town, at a town meeting.
So, all we're doing is recommending that it be placed on the law.
No, we gotta...
We have to make a recommendation for it, so that the town can vote on it.
Yeah, we have to recommend, it's either pass it or not pass it.
We're gonna recommend it's been by us, we've looked at it, and it can go to be voted. We don't have to say anything, don't have to give any opinions.
Yeah, no, you do have to, we ran into this years ago, when we, I, I think you were on the board...
Yeah, we did.
When we referred it, we referred it to the voters, and attorney general came down on us, and it took an act of the legislature to, to do it. It was a, it was a big to-do, I can't remember what the site was, but it was something we...
I remember, and it was something stupid.
Yeah.
It wasn't even...
Right, yeah, it was. It, it wasn't even a big thing, it was something small, and, and, you know, we, we have to, up or down, we have to vote up or down. But, but, we gotta get it on there, what happens on town meeting is... But, as you can, as you can see, we've had, this is the third public hearing. The first one over at the council on aging, we had the janitor, somebody that had ate there, and one of the selectmen.
Second was the same.
And this, well, the second one...
It was a decent crowd.
I think we had maybe...
At the high school.
We didn't have that many.
Two public, two public information sessions, and then this was the second one.
Oh, oh, yeah, that one. Yeah, okay, that was just a public information session, yes, yes. But as far as the public hearing, required public hearings, one hand, I can count everybody. So, which is unfortunate, it's an awful lot of appetite in, in the voters, that people...
You've got a million-dollar house, you're gonna work.
Yeah, but people...
You kind of wouldn't go to meetings.
People, and we don't have a newspaper that, that says anything of any, any substance. I, I wonder how many people, you know, I got the photocopy of the actual newspaper, it's a big, long thing, and, and little tiny print, you can't even read, but nobody reads that, nobody...
Yeah, but you try to sign up for the enterprise online?
I do, I'm on it.
I know. But, you've gotta have a little bit of knowledge to understand the steps they want you to go through. It's not simple.
Yeah, they, they keep, they keep changing the, changing the format around, but it's a yearly, it's a yearly thing, I think it's $99 something for a year. I don't even know when the, last time I gave it to them, I know a few years ago, I, I didn't even sign up for it, and I had it for a long time, but all of a sudden, they caught up with me. So, one of these days, they're gonna catch up with me. But, the only thing I look for is public notices and, and a bitchwurst, look to see if my name's there, and if it isn't there, I'm happy. But, we gotta, we gotta send it to town meeting.
I move to send it to town meeting.
Okay. Let me...
Which, we got, which article we vote in?
Okay, we gotta...
Yeah, MBTA.
We have the numbers. I did ADUs as Article 1 and MBTA.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I, let me, Lucy was kind enough.
That's not on those pages.
Article 1, and the motion will be, move that the planning board recommend the article 1 regarding accessory dwelling units as presented with a modification to delete the following section.
So...
We already, we already had something in it, and we're having to take this section, which this is already in our current bylaw. It's, "A special permit shall be required by the general, in the general residence and farming district for use of land to structures for an ADU or rental there on a lot which is protected use ADU is already located. Only one, only one accessory dwelling unit may be created within or in connection to a single-family dwelling." And to provide such recommendation to the town meeting and for the selectmen. We already had something in there that we have to take out.
It was actually, it hadn't, it didn't even appear, it was in a draft that we were working through, and it stayed in, it shouldn't even have gone in, so that's why that one's come out.
That'd be...
So, this is 1?
This is for the ADU, I'd prefer it be Article 1.
The ADU?
No, ADU.
The U's?
ADU is number 1.
Yeah.
So moved, what you said.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Before we go too far, we allow residential in a, over a, in a, with a commercial building now, right? That passed at town meeting a year ago.
Mixed use.
So, is that considered an ADU? Could it be an ADU? Could it be rental property?
So, you couldn't have a mixed-use permit, completely distinct from the ADU. So, if you could get a permit for a mixed-use in the business district?
Yes, we voted that...
Yeah.
Last town meeting, or the one before, or something. Okay.
Moves that the planning board recommend the Article 2 regarding the MBTA multifamily housing overlay district as presented and to provide such recommendation for the town meeting and board of selectmen.
So moved.
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
As voters unite on this. I know. I, I don't like being bullied either.
I think it's gonna put us in the best position to kind of control what happens with it versus the town coming in and just putting a boot on us.
And, and...
State, I mean.
And, in fact, you just brought up a, a point that I, we've discussed before. If we pick the place, and we picked a, a place that is good, if we don't, and the state comes in, they could take, they could, they could find a place anywhere that they want. And, and it might be, who knows where, where it could be, what it could be. We don't have that much open land left, but they could do it.
Put it at the end of Oak Hill Way.
Don't give them any ideas, Terry.
By the next to Brighton's move, this... We have land there.
Yeah.
On the railroad tracks.
Yeah. But, at least, such as Mark was just saying, we, we have a limited control. I won't say we have control, but we, we have control over where we put, where we put it.
Now, we just need the selectmen to sell to the town.
The only thing is, is some of the towns on the left that haven't voted, there is some, out the western part of the state, Dover, out that direction, there's some big money in those towns, so it's getting the right judged.
Hello?
Let the, let the...
We, we, unfortunately, we know, we know what the judge we have. And that's, that's... Talking, talking over, I was...
The right thing's not always the popular thing.
No. Okay, let's, okay, the next thing. Copeland Street and Tiffany Circle, and we, and we have some interested residents of the area, of others, so we still leave, you don't have many people that come to our meeting, but at least we have some that are, that are interested. And, and Mr. Rogers is here from Holmgren, J.K. Holmgren Associates. And this is something where they were proposing to put a, quote, a subdivision in, but yet, they never, they never were able to, to meet zoning with it, so, but it's still sitting there, so what we gotta do is, is... were able to, to meet zoning with it, so, uh, but it's still sitting there, so what we gotta do is, is, uh, vote to deny the definitive subdivision application submitted for, uh, the property on, on Copeland, Copeland Street.
So moved.
And the reason being is that it does not comply with us only.
And it hasn't in the past. This is not the first time we've seen it.
So.
We have an invoice, but then they still gonna have to pay that enterprise and the mailing?
Who? Say this again.
The ones that proposed the chicken.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. I've done my old sundown out.
Yeah, Mr. Manny.
It was pretty expensive, so.
Mr. Rogers, I'll give it to Mr. Manny.
Oh, it's right near, somewhere.
Okay. Is it in here?
Yeah, it should be. It was.
Okay, I, I, everything that's, is in there. So I'll, I'll entertain a motion to vote to deny the subdivision of, uh, presented by, um, let me get it right. Motion to disapprove Manny Bubinglas on behalf of MJM Construction Definitive Subdivision Plan Application. Shown on a one-page plan entitled Definitive Subdivision of Plan of Land Prepared by J.K. Holmgren Engineering LLC, dated July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five for the following reason. And the following reasons are that it does not comply with zoning. We have a motion, do we have a second, or do we have a motion?
Yes, you do.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of denying the, uh.
Yes.
Subdivision.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, voters unanimously, so four present. Yeah, somebody's happy. Okay, moving right along now. This, this, the remaining one is, um, two, three twenty-one, three twenty-three Manly Street. It's a special permit for activity in the Water Resource Protection District. And, Mr. Rogers, are you going to speak to that?
Yes. Feel bored with me if you'd like to see that, but, um, so, for the record, my name is Scott Rogers from J.K. Holmgren Engineering. And I believe that Mr. Ferrier from our firm was back before you in July. Since that time, uh, we did file with Conservation Commission. The Conservation Commission sent that plan review out to Pat Brennan at PJB, I believe, have we? There was a letter that went out, comments came back from that letter, we gave those revisions. There was a second letter that came from Pat Brennan, we made those comments. And I believe, talking to Tracy via email, that we basically met all the requirements from Pat Brennan's letter. We will be looking for approval for that and we have a meeting set up with Conservation Commission next week as well to hopefully get that under as well. So with that, I'd love to answer questions that you may have.
Okay, um, I inadvertently didn't read the, um, public notice. Wait a minute, no, this one's already been opened, never mind, this is a continuation. Okay. We, we have some, um.
We have that one too.
Some, uh, letters, we have the letters that he spoke of. This has also been reviewed by the Conservation Commission as they had the Stormwater Management and Control, uh, Administrators. And, uh, Mr. Brennan, Engineer Brennan, also reviewed it for, for us and, uh, the, um, he had a couple of comments, uh, one, a couple of them that, um, regarding, uh, our section, uh, four point six point seven point one does not allow storage of liquid hazardous materials and or liquid petroleum products unless, one, the storage is above ground and impervious service and two, containers or tanks, tanks within improved and protected structure with containment to hold, uh, which is all part of this. And then he went on to say, uh, that should the board approve the special agreement that recommended a general condition that prohibits the use listed under, uh, section, uh, four point six point seven not be allowed on site except for the storage of liquid hazardous materials and liquid petroleum product that comply with the conditions stated in, uh, comment.
We have to do a special permit for this, right?
Yeah, this is a special permit, yeah. And, uh, we also have some, um, other correspondence.
I mean, this has been an ongoing with conservation and they're kinda watching their meetings. And they've had considerable discussion because of some filling that's been done and they've had to relocate wetlands and stuff that, it, well, is to quote the chairman of the conservation. Too much was, they're asking, too much was done prior to without asking permission. So I, anything that I know I'll vote for, it's gonna be subject to conservation.
Yeah, yeah, well.
Because conservation has got some heavy, there's some heavy stuff that conservation wants answers to.
Well, actually.
In fact, they moved the building, the building that is presented to us, I believe, has been moved from the highway towards Manly Street to give them more recharge area and something to do with the wetlands that's between the building and Route twenty-four.
The, um, it definitely comes under Conservation Union anyways.
Oh, yeah.
And, and it's, and we can, we can put in with our conditions, uh, that Congress put it in also, even though it's a bygone fact, it's established they have to do it, but it, I, I have, I have no problem with that because they gotta do it anyways, but.
In fact, they're waiting for our vote tonight before they even take any further action on this.
Okay. Let me get back to reading the things, uh, the, um, selectmen have no objection to concerns with the proposal. The fire chief, if this project is approved, they will need to tie in for the sprinkler system from Manly Street and place a fire hydrant within one hundred feet of the sprinkler connection for the new building. Scott, did you get the comments from the, um, copies of something?
From the fire department? I believe we did.
Okay. Do you honor, would you see that they, no, no, not now, but see, see that they do get, uh, forwarded to them or, uh?
He wants a hydrant within a hundred feet, right?
Yeah. Now, is that it?
We may have, because I believe we have a proposed fire hydrant within a hundred feet of the building.
And also from, um, the water department, Lane Parks, this, this is a building that is doing something with, this is the battery that it, this is a building that is doing something with batteries. It was thought they didn't have enough upland area to do it. The water department has no issues. They just made a statement and said no issues. And, uh, let me, to just, to be sure, the, the set of plans I have is the last, um, revision date is nine five twenty-five and it says peer review, is that the, that, this the plan of record?
We have a later revision, uh, revision four, which is dated October first, which is peer review number two, Pat Brennan. Can I have those here on the floor?
Yes, uh, okay.
Okay.
Like sharing?
These are full size, yeah.
Probably easier.
Maybe if you could just run, run through with it.
Sure, I'd change it out. One of the, uh, comments that Pat made was regarding the test pits and the elevations on the test pits. You know, the elevation of the test pit on the ground and then versus groundwater below that. And one of the, our response back to that was the, uh, topography that was on the plans before was from an older set of plans that was taken and when we updated that, we updated the test pits, so Pat Brennan was fine with that response. As far as infiltration for, there's basically three basins here, there's an underground infiltration basin, chamber system. There's a bio-retention area in the back of the building here. And then there's another basin over here, which has a sediment four bay and a wet basin, which is closer to groundwater. His comment was that for the soil types that we have on the site, uh, we were using kind of an aggressive infiltration rate. He made us back that down from two point forty-one to one point oh-two, so we made that change. He made a comment about recharge, uh, it was a really kind of a, just a math, math issue. Typically with projects like this, the recharge in those basins far exceeds what the state asks you to do, so we made that change and he's happy with that. Same with the water quality volume, typically, uh, with soil types like this, the water quality volume that's required by the state is met in those basins. And we did that and revised our calculations. Then, uh, typically, one of the requirements in the mass use this groundwater handbook is that basins drain within seventy-two hours. So we did those calculations and proved that those basins will drain within seventy-two hours, so Pat was happy with that one. And then we had an emergency spillway, which is basically riprap, uh, riprap overflow from the bio-retention area here, and there was a mathematical typo, if you will, on the elevations of that versus the drainage report, the calculation. That was corrected. And then, uh, on the pipes going into those basins, we didn't show riprap at the bottom of the flared end section, we added those. That was a mistake, I probably should have done that. And the oil drip separator, uh, we were looking, we added some, um, specific inverts for the manholes that are next to that particular unit. Uh, there was some details on the plans that were missing, we added those details. As far as the sediment erosion drill plan, there was just a typo, if you will, about, uh, the detail number versus the detail on the detail sheet, fixed that. And then there was a detail for the outlet control structure that didn't define or didn't show the wet basin, we might have called it something other than infiltration basin, so we just changed the wording on that. Uh, there's a detail for a catch basin with a shallow hood, uh, or shallow basin, if you will, shallow cover. And that did not show the hood on it, so we added that to that detail. And then, uh, he had a comment about, uh, because we are in a zone two, if the metal, if the building has a roof that's metal, it should be coated because, uh, typically metal, typically roofs are considered clean runoff, except for roofs that are metal, copper, galvanized steel, so we added that note. And then there was some, uh, basically some comments about the infiltration system, the storm tech system we have on the details. And we added a couple notes around that to satisfy. So a lot of, obviously a lot of stuff about drainage and mostly, you know, uh, nice, good comments that were sort of typos and mistakes and whatnot, but he corrected us on those.
I, I, I know, you see, I, I saw where he said about the, the, uh, the roofs, the metal, I don't know. Yet our water comes through copper pipes. And, and, uh, our water mains, the, the, the newer ones are cemented iron, but the older ones are just plain cast iron. So, uh, and, uh, I, 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 I've heard this before, it just, I, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll put it in because we're, we're recommended by, apparently, somebody with a higher paid grade than ours knows something we don't know, so we'll, we'll, we'll put it in, but I, I just.
So building, it'll be sprinkled?
I believe it, yeah, I believe it will be.
So you're gonna have to run a water main into it?
We have a six-inch, uh, a six-inch line coming from the street and that'll die off.
Directly, so that'll be where you can put your hydrant?
Uh, the hydrants will be right here. The hydrant has to be with a hundred feet of the FTC, which is gonna be on that corner of the building.
So, yeah, so you're gonna run all the way to there from the street?
Yep. There'll be a six-inch line coming from the street.
Okay. Cause I didn't know with the, cause I, I don't know if that's gonna be a clean building like the one they got next door. What they do is sprinkle it. Because, because of the medical stuff they make, they call it a clean building. It's, you're almost in white suits, everybody that's in there, masks and.
I don't think that's the intent of this building, but.
That's what their company does.
No, I understand that. We were told that.
They converted, they converted the one next door that was the woodworking shop into a clean building, it was quite an extensive.
I see by the, uh, that you have adequate parking, the sixteen required in year twenty-one. And, cause you're sharing the same piece of parcel with the other, so you, you've got some little buffer next door, so parking isn't a issue. There's no residential, yeah. Where, where are your, your lighting?
We have, uh, I don't know if it's in the lighting plan, that's it or not. The light poles are showing on all the plans.
I know the light poles for the existing buildings there don't meet our new standards. We want block styles that shine straight, straightly down, nothing up. Even if it's on the building, it should be, uh, you know, wooded type.
So the site plan, we showed the light pole, and we typically, uh, we always do dark style, dark style compliant. Uh, tiered point, downlit, facing light poles and building modulars.
Why don't we, uh, there'll be another condition, just put it in another set of conditions. Which the building inspector looks fine anyways. We, we, we asked the question how to, how to have it because of, at one time they used to come in this pretty wild lighting. And as far as getting in and out of here, the traffic pattern and stuff is, is adequate, isn't it? Using present curb cuts, it's no new curb cuts, it's no, in fact, it's a piece of backland, actually. It's still on, it's still on the, um, same parcel. Like it's a standalone building, three twenty-one to three twenty-three is a separate building, so this is just a standalone building out there. It's adjacent to, um, other commercial buildings. And the car car address is on it, the drainage district is just now there.
And just for the record, uh, this plan shows it, and I believe your plans that you have show it too, but, uh, there's a substantial wetland replication area that's shown in the red hatch pattern as well as the one going along with that pipe, uh, pipe was. So we are doing, uh.
That was had to be done because. That was, had to be done because they filled in right to the right of the building.
That's correct.
Over time, I think dump trucks' tailgates were open. Somebody was getting rid of some fill.
That's what happened, but
I know that Concombe was very upset over it was filled.
It definitely was filled wetlands. We're not debating that for sure. But of the filled wetlands, we're replacing, I believe it's like a three to one ratio. So they'll, they'll be doing a good job of fixing their mistakes, if you will.
Okay. So anybody having questions, concerns, interest, any kind of input? Okay, we, we have to, this is also a site plan review, but we have to make some findings. In here, it was a question on, on the owner, so it is Brian McLaughlin?
Yes, correct.
Okay, he owns it individually, not as a
Probably under an entity. It's probably under an LLC, I believe.
Okay, if it is Brian, okay. Donna, make it easier on you, it's page 14 of the, of the thing.
Okay.
We'll need a, a motion to find that Brian McLaughlin's application for special permit pursuant to Mass. General Laws 4.6, Water Resource Protection District, 7.2, site plan, 7.5, special permit, 4.4, table of use, warehouse and dispute assigned except fuel to construct and offering a 9,600 square foot office warehouse building was related improvements as well as the expansion of the existing parking area to add 21 parking spaces at the property located at 321, 323 Manly Street in the industrial and water resource protection district. For the consideration of proof of special permission, section 7.5.3.1. A, the specific site is an appropriate location for such use and structure. B, the use has developed and operated and not adversely affected neighborhood. C, there'll be no nuisance or hazard to vehicles or pedestrians or volume greater than the capacity of streets affected. D, adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of proposed use. And E, access to the site or the streets is appropriate for the type of vehicles involved. And 7.5.3.2. A, the use is appropriate for the hydrology, natural to park leak soils and other characters of the site to be developed. B, the use will not during construction or thereafter have any adverse environmental impact on any of the zones of the Water Resource Protection District. And C, use will not adversely affect an existing or designated future well site. And the, the application is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning by law and subject to an assistance with safeguards and limited vehicles. Now we got one move, now it's another move. Move to the applicant's, our special pursuant to, that I just read before, okay. With the following conditions. Mr. Brennan's condition recommends for zoning by laws, storage of liquid, which I read earlier, and the truth prohibited, I read that earlier. Use remain appropriate for the hydrology, natural soil conditions. Use will not during construction or thereafter have any adverse environmental impact. Five, the use will not adversely affect an existing or designated well. See, a concrete decision must be recorded with the county registry and these, and the maintenance authority, so be submitted to the, by the application for building permit and, and certain health plans be provided. And Conservation Commission, what is it, water conditions, Scott?
Hopefully next week we'll get that hearing closed. It's double.
Did a valid water condition be, be granted
Yes.
By the Conservation Commission? And there was another one in here. For the lighting, lighting?
Lighting.
So, and you know what we're talking about, the hooded light, hold on.
They go under the site plan? We're doing the Water Resources Protection District right now.
Oh, yeah, no, why, he wants, he wants to be in here because this is a special permit. The site plan is just a recommendation. We will have the same. So we have a motion and a second. Or do we? We'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Noix, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Hurley votes aye. In the office of the floor president. Now, it is site plan approved. Move to find that as conditions, the site plan, violating subfloor in section 7.2. A, the protection of visual corridors. Use of landscaping, friends who establish buffers between out of the land uses, which don't exist here. Provision of open space pedestrian enemies, built to the public, they got that one up. Management of access points, there are conditions. Ease of access, travel on site, fire, police. We got that. Underground placement of utilities. Are they, is the electric in that underground?
Underground.
It is underground. Prevention for surface runoff and protection of site elevation point, which the Conservation Commission has already addressed. Citing a building structure on the open space to permit maximum use of passive solar energy and to permit maximum protection of pedestrian areas from adverse effects of winds, deters, or other emissions, shadows, or the noise. And hysterical considerations and compatibility with abutting properties, provision of maintenance in common areas. Have been considered and satisfied by Mr. McLaughlin. To construct and operate a 9,600 square foot office warehouse building, video related improvements as well as the expansion of the existing parking area to add 21 parking spaces to property located at 321, 323 Manly Street in, in the industrial and water resource protection district and properties located at 321, 323 Manly Street in the industrial and water resource protection district. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Well, those are, Mr. Noix, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein, how do I vote?
Aye.
Mr. Stetson, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Mr. Hurley votes aye.
I was just looking at, this says revise through September 5th, and you mentioned at October 1st?
October 1st, yeah.
October 1st.
Okay, so, Donna?
Mm-hmm.
The plans, as shown on plans dated with that date?
October 1st.
October 1?
Okay.
There's many revisions on these plans. You need a scorecard to just keep track of them.
Thank you very much.
Okay, you, well, you know the routine. We'll, we'll send it to the town clerk to stamp it in, appeal period.
Yep. And then record it. Yeah.
Okay. With that being said, it One special. This public hearing. Thank you, Bennett.
Thank you very much.